Welcome, everyone, to the October 26 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone at home and here. Before we get into the meat of the evening, I have placed in front of you a resolution. And this resolution talks about all the things that we have been doing about housing and the homeless issue. And then the salient parts on page three, which basically says, "City Eugene is committed to exploring options for the creation of suitable short-term shelter spaces for the homeless. In addition to the creation of permanent housing options for the homeless, addressing this issue is urgent in order to aid those in need of shelter." Section two of the City Council, "The City Eugene joins a request of the City of Portland that Governor Kate Brown declare a state of emergency concerning homelessness." And then three, "The City Manager directed to forward a copy of this resolution to Governor Brown." So I'm just giving this to you today to read and consider. If you have questions, we can certainly discuss them on Wednesday. And Counselor Saretta has agreed to send this forward on Wednesday. So this is for you to look at today. Okay? And the other thing around this that I think would be important to you is that the joint meeting with the Human Rights Commission has been set up for December...
Ninth?
Nine?
Yeah, December ninth.
And the reason it's in December is because the Human Rights Commission wanted it out at that date because they have to have some planning time ahead of time. So that we have two major things. One is that meeting, and the other is this resolution, which I hope you will send to the public. All right, so we will now move on to the main item of the day. And before I turn this over to the City Manager, I just wanted you, for the sake of the public, read what I sent out. I asked the City Manager, "Please place on our council meeting agenda three items that were in Counselor Clark's motion on the 21st. These are for discussion only. I have no motions in mind. I simply want counsel to have an opportunity for the discussion of these items since they have far-reaching implications for other policy decisions we have made and future decisions to come. This discussion could help inform community outreach and further planning commission deliberations." I would like counsel here from staff and Planning Commission regarding what they have heard and discussed regarding these items. And these are the three items that were on in Counselor Clark's motion. And then I said, "I do not find consideration of these motions unreasonable, as I think they are important to the property owners and the city as a whole. I also find the preservation of old neighborhoods to be as important, if not more so, than development of new neighborhood options. We cannot replace this special mixture of all income levels and types of housing. We cannot replace the green infrastructure and skyline access that currently exist. I think we should take the time necessary to work on all neighborhood concerns and consider, again, the kinds of infill that are most compatible with the neighborhood and in keeping with other city goals. I think we should do our best to build on the good bone structure already in place. And I think we have to keep in mind the full variety of micro-neighborhood types that currently exist. This is not uniform. It seems to me we must have a much more nuanced approach to this planning in older neighborhoods. As we do all these things, I continue to believe we must use the expertise of our professional planners and the input of our city planning commission." So in response to that, we're going to have a discussion today about the implications of the motion that was passed last week. City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Robin and his team in just a moment. And so recognizing we've had a relatively short period of time to try to put together some information around implications and impacts, Robin and his team have tried to put together some of the things we know at this time. And I'll turn that over to you.
Thanks, John. First of all, a little preamble, just to lower expectations. We've had two working days to have a look, so not a whole lot of time to analyze in depth what some of the implications may be. So we're just going to hit the highlights and hope that we cover enough to have a good conversation for your request, Mayor. We're going to go ahead and start off here. A couple of different areas where we'll be talking about. First, oops, we'll look at the South Willamette Special Area Zone and just talk about, well, what could this potentially mean for that particular project moving forward? And that also around public process, the zone boundary, and then the design concepts we went through at the last meeting, hopefully briefly. Next, we'll look at the Envision Eugene Adoption Package, so multifamily capacity assumptions and analysis. There are certainly some questions raised around that. And comprehensive plan policies, which are about ready to be released, and some questions around the fundamentals of that as well. Finally, related planning projects and initiatives, everything from transportation system plan assumptions, climate recovery ordinance, and beyond. So questions around all those, again, I'm not sure that we're going to have necessarily answers for you today, but that's the broad scope. So in terms of the South Willamette Special Area Zone, this is a list of the key design concepts that we talked about last week. And I'll just try to touch on how the motion of last week may affect these one way or the other. Beginning with building types and heights, as I mentioned, the way that a special area zone works is to replace zoning and essentially rezone all the properties in a particular area according to a vision. As I mentioned, that vision was crafted through the South Willamette Concept Plan. And so the idea would be to look at the same boundary and the same ideas and try to realize that through the code. And again, that's looking at all the different uses within that area. So what would that mean? This is the area that we're considering previously for the South Willamette Special Area Zone, outlined in red there. So the areas, and again, this is based on some assumptions perhaps that we're making about the motion, since it's not entirely clear what all the elements of that motion mean. We're assuming it to mean that if there is an R1-zoned property that has a home on it, that any property next to that could not be rezoned. And also that the R1 property with the home could not be rezoned without that homeowner's permission. So that's the way we're looking at that. And I don't know if entirely it'll take time to sort out whether that's true or not. In any case, using that assumption, these areas here, about 38.6 acres are R1, so those, of course, would not be rezoned under the conditions of the motion. Another non-R1 set of property, about a little over 50 acres, which are adjacent to R1, could also not be rezoned. And so that removes roughly, what is it, retains? So the non-R1 here, we've got about 32.7 acres that's left, so that's property that is not adjacent to R1 and is not R1. So those are the properties that would potentially be available for some kind of rezoning through a special area zone. Those are primarily some commercial properties along the corridor there. At this point, in terms of an area zoning or an area planning approach and using a special area zone as a tool to realize that, I'm not sure how that works moving forward, given that there's less than 30%, sometime somewhere between 25% and 30% of the property left to work with. So looking at height limits, that's another consideration. Again, we went through in quite a bit of detail last time about how a lot of the heights would be lowered. Well, because there's sort of a patchwork of the properties that were left over, you could potentially end up with a patchwork of heights in that area unless there was some other process used. And again, I'm not sure what that would be at this point. So certain properties would remain at the 120-foot maximum height limit. Even in areas where there was previously concern, actually, half of this would remain at the current zoning limitation of seven stories. And let's see here. So these are the areas where the code would, let me do that again, these are the areas where the height limitations imposed by the special area zone would potentially go away. And so that's what's left over. Here's how it looks. We looked at a couple of cross-sections. The red is existing, the blue is the South Willamette Special Area Zone. This yellow here is what the motion would do. So essentially, along South Willamette Street in this particular section, it would restore some of the height along the street because those properties being adjacent to R1 could not be rezoned. Some of these properties adjacent here where there was additional height added through the special area zone, that would be removed. So looking along 29th Avenue, same type of situation, that additional height along 29th Avenue would be removed. Looking at Portland Street south of 29th Avenue, there's existing, there's the special area zone proposed previously, and then this is how the motion would affect that. So essentially, these areas here, which are certainly an area of concern, that additional height allowance would be removed. And then just point out that some of the, I guess that would be added right there, that didn't make it in, or not added, but it would be left according to the current zone unless something else was done. So the existing code, again, tall buildings allowed, there is no special setback or anything to handle that street-side edge problem that we talked about. With a proposed special area zone that would consistently handle all those frontages along the corridor, both on 29th and Willamette Street, the new motion would essentially remove portions of that here in the middle and then portions along 29th Avenue where you could potentially have a situation where you have a certain allowance on one side of the street that's very different from what's on the other side, potentially one side having a special setback and the other possibly not. So in terms of great streets, and I hope this doesn't appear too dramatic, yeah, it's pretty dramatic anyway, so that's just sort of an illustration of how that could play out. Undoubtedly, from an economic standpoint, you'd ever get those buildings at this point, but in terms of entitlement, that's what it looks like. So transitions, single-family protections addressed through the public process. Again, the idea was, of course, to use intermediate building types like row houses and whatnot to transition from larger intensity commercial types down to single-family homes. And essentially, without the ability to rezone intermittent properties, then what you would have, and let's see what happens here, what you would have is these higher-intensity uses potentially right next to the lower-intensity uses without that transition in between. For the other transition areas, of course, these were the suggestions. That's what I was mentioning with that other transition use. These types of special transitions that are associated with essentially every, I think I went through this last time, every use next to R1 or single-family options would reduce that entitlement and create additional limitations. Let's see here. So trees, limitation of dormers, other things to limit that visual privacy. So those, again, would only apply to areas where we would be able to do that rezoning or apply that tool. So here's another look, and these are some visuals that we used during the public process to try to illustrate some of the changes. So that's what would be potentially currently allowed next to R1 in some locations. So step down, push it back, articulate that, drop the edge, add the trees. So those are the kinds of things that we talked about with the community. In addition, there was discussion of balconies. We don't want balconies too close, and so setting those back an additional 10 feet from the property line. And as I mentioned, sort of with the limitations and where the special area zone would apply, that would also limit the application of that. Solar access, I know that's come up a few times, so solar access standards are in the code currently. And there was some discussion of modifying those through the special area zone. That discussion ended at Planning Commission level, and they said, "No, I think we have good solar access standards right now. Let's continue to keep those." And so solar access is essentially unaffected. Vehicle use and loading, this is more of a question. We're not exactly sure how specifically to interpret the vehicle use and loading element. Vehicle use, of course, happens on streets and driveways and lots of places. Now, if it's applied to commercial areas, if that's really the concern, sort of vehicle use and loading around higher-intensity activities like commercial use, the current condition today, I don't know if there's anything in here that shows this, oh, there we go. Current condition today is that you have, this pink right here is commercial, the light yellow is R1. So you can see there's a back fence abutting situation between commercial and R1. And that, of course, is what the special area zone is intended to add some flexibility in there by creating the allowance for row houses in between there. So you have R1 backing up to row houses and row houses backing up to mixed use to create that transition instead of that sort of abrupt change right there. So that is the, so essentially, it goes the other way around. So this is what the proposal would be for the special area zone, and that's more like what we would have without applying that potentially. I'm just going to skip through that. So another piece is housing diversity. Housing diversity, of course, was the idea that there are a lot of missing housing types in town, row houses, cluster cottages, whatnot, smaller square-footage types of dwellings that could be still owned either by an individual or a small family or a couple or what have you. So we have a lot of the R1 properties, and we'll see later on, sort of larger lot, single homes. The housing diversity was intended to be a zone that fits in terms of style and scale and lots of other aspects in with that single-family zone. And with the inability to rezone any of those properties, of course, the single-family option zone would go away, and the single-family option's row house zone would also not be So at this point, I'll pass it on to Terry to look at some potentially broader implications.
Okay, so just a couple more slides. Bear with me. Section three of the motion, you might recall, applies the language in the previous two sections regarding plan designation changes and zone changes and compatibility standards to planning efforts citywide, including the comprehensive plan and other planning projects. So we've just begun to look at the effects of these. A number of questions have been raised about these in-progress projects by city staff from different departments, by the Planning Commission, Sustainability Commissioners, members of our Technical Resource Group, and other community members. And we're working hard on compiling a list of those questions and starting to look at First, with Envision Eugene, our immediate concern or our top thing we want to look at is the effect on our central strategies for area planning, corridor redevelopment, and 20-minute neighborhoods. These strategies are planned to be implemented through policies in the, as Robin mentioned, about-to-be-released preliminary draft of the Envision Eugene Comprehensive Plan and the accompanying Action Plan. And the release of these drafts and the public meetings scheduled for November, we've put on hold because we're not sure the extent to which this direction conflicts with previous direction given on Envision Eugene that's been then wrapped into the policies that we've drafted. Preliminary review shows that adjustments would need to be developed, vetted, and refined for numerous policies in the Comprehensive Plan chapters on compact development, housing, public involvement, and economic development. In addition, 14 strategies and their associated actions in the Action Plan would need to be examined for adjustment. And we don't know at this point to what extent that would push back the schedule, but it would likely have an impact on our schedule for adopting the Comprehensive Plan and urban growth boundary. Backing up from the Comprehensive Plan is the capacity analysis underlying Envision Eugene. As you know, we are striving to accommodate our 20-year multifamily need inside the existing urban growth boundary through strategies such as area planning, corridor redevelopment, and investments such as the MUPD program. Our Technical Resource Group reviewed and analyzed economic and redevelopment data to determine possible ways to address that multifamily deficit, the deficit of that type of land. The capacity analysis of existing commercial and medium and high-density land did not factor in adjacency to R1 as a constraint. So this new direction would need to be analyzed and vetted through the Technical Resource Group to really see if it does have an effect on our capacity numbers and/or the actual feasibility of redevelopment in those locations. And we would want to run that through the Technical Resource Group before finalizing our documents to send up to the State of Oregon for adoption. There's a variety of other projects that are in process, let me go back one slide, that rely on similar assumptions to Envision Eugene. So the transportation system plan is along a similar path of adoption, and we're looking into that. Growth assumptions and policies that are being developed for the TSP. In addition, we're looking at current work underway to implement the climate recovery ordinance, looking at the impact on future area planning projects, and the Bethel, Building a Better Bethel Project, which has an action plan of actions that would need to be reviewed under this new direction. We're looking at moving ahead and possible impacts to other corridors beyond South Willamette, although South Willamette does give us an idea of if we were to apply this direction and the motion to other corridors, what that new area might look like. So from there, that just shows you where our other transit corridors are. We're talking about Highway 99, River Road, and Cover Road primarily. And this map we developed to get a handle on what zoning looks like citywide. So you can see that the black is our existing R1 zones. It's a good portion of the city. We've pulled out agriculture and natural resources in their brown and green colors and public lands, but what's left is the gray areas are industrial, commercial, and high-density residential. So those are the areas not impacted by a motion that directs us to not rezone R1 and adjacent lands. Sorry for the double negatives there. And then just to bring this back to an example of our impact analysis on South Willamette, you can see how that plays out in this corridor with the resulting boundary being 32 acres, like that shape. And I'll just leave you with the thought that really my main concern as we move towards an adoption package for Envision Eugene is that we're seeking a little bit of clarification from you on how the motion should be applied to our citywide policies for multifamily growth and so that we can play the motion and its requirements all the way through the analysis process. Then that gets taken into comprehensive plan policies that are part of the adoption package. And the engagement process that was mentioned in the motion is something that needs further discussion as well, as you, I'm sure, know. That's, I think, the end of what I have for now. Thank you. Look forward to your discussion.
Thank you. And before we move to discussion, you're through to Robin.
Yeah, yeah, sure, thanks.
Before we move to discussion, Ed Moore is here with DLCD, and I'd like to invite him up to come and tell us if there are any legal issues around this that we need to be conscious of. DLCD, it stands for...
My name is Ed Moore. I'm the Regional Representative for the Department of Land Conservation and Development for Lain, Lynn, and Benton Counties. And I've been involved in monitoring and following the Envision Eugene process from the very beginning and involved in a number of other planning efforts on the part of the city. I was made aware of the motion that was put before the council at the last work session, and it does cause us some concern in terms of with regard to the status of all the ongoing planning you've been doing under Envision Eugene. It also could potentially affect your current standing with the metro plan and its ability to remain an acknowledged comprehensive plan. And I guess, first of all, when you look at the proposed amendment and you go back to the last time you were acknowledged and got the periodic review, one of the things that the city is allowed to do is defer rezoning property when you actually adopt your comprehensive plan. So you can actually have what they call "plan-zone conflicts." And because Eugene had clear and objective standards, you were able to do that. The motion before you right now would, I guess you could say, put in jeopardy your ability to have clear and objective standards that would allow that status to remain in play. So in other words, one of the things that the city would have to do if you passed such language that would have the sort of caveats that are in the policy that was voted on by council at the last work session, would require you to actually go back and amend the metro plan and rezone all the land to basically match the zoning. So since you're in effect saying, "We're not going to allow it to be rezoned what is currently designated," and I think in the South Willamette area, you have some areas that are medium-density residential and high-density residential, there are currently zoned single-family residential. And so if that were the case, you, in effect, lose that capacity, and you would have to then evaluate your entire city and see whether you have the ability to make up that capacity somewhere else. And you would have to, in effect, redesignate that land in the comp plan to match the zoning itself. And that way, you would, in effect, not, you wouldn't have that violation of the housing goal 10 affecting you any longer. So that's sort of the one thing. So it currently would change the map you've had since, what, 2004, I think, is when you came out of periodic review. Then going forward, one of the things that you have to do is you have to have clear and objective standards as you move forward, obviously, and Eugene has had a set of clear and objective standards for quite a few years. To add this into the mix then sort of brings into question whether or not you would have, as far as rezonings, a clear and objective path forward. And what that would mean is that in the future going forward, let's say you adopt a Envision Eugene, a new comprehensive plan map, there you would have to have in place plan and zoning that is consistent with one another's. And so at this point, it's been my understanding and working with staff and some of the conversations that have been going on, is that when Envision Eugene was going to be adopted, the comp plan was going to be adopted, and the zoning would happen later on. Because, one, I think we can all look around and say, "You don't have the capacity, nobody has the capacity to go back and almost do all the zoning and plan amendments and the specific plans that need to be required in one fail swoop. You would never get to the finish line, as it were." And so recognizing that, okay, so that's fine, you're allowed to do that under Sub-25 of Division 8. But now with that kind of a policy in play, that may not be possible. And I can't say unequivocally it would not be possible, but there's a high likelihood that you would not be able to do that. So that's another consideration that you have to have. The other thing in that looking at it is, you know, you all set policy for the city. So you decide how you want to grow, where you want to grow, what densities you want to grow. When you factor in all this, and I think it was just pointed out in the South Willamette area, the amount of area that comes out of play, so to speak, as a result of a policy like this, then you would need to go back and, in effect, recalculate your buildable lands and your current capacity of the existing UGB. I would say based on zoning, not on what the current metro plan says. And so you would have to literally go back and do that whole evaluation over again and figure out where you are with regard to the amount of residential land, residential need that you could meet and multifamily or high-density and medium-density residential. So quite a bit of work that you'd have to go back and basically redo. At the end of the day, you know, it would probably be a different-looking UGB in that now capacity that you currently have inside the UGB would go away. And those are areas that are currently planned for medium and high-density residential that, say, would go back to single-family residential. So that's, you know, one consequence. The other is, is that you look at, you know, how you want to build, whether it's your transit corridors and that sort of thing, is whether or not it is actually feasible or possible to actually accomplish that. Again, as you saw in South Willamette, a significant amount of area comes out of play. And consequently, to try and develop and put housing near transit that would allow people easy access to transit versus the automobile, you may not, again, be able to get the type of capacity that you had originally anticipated in Envision Eugene. And again, that would affect the numbers in terms of how you would accommodate that within the existing UGB and your proposed UGB. And so it's real problematic. I think as you move forward, one of the things you'd want to consider as you're looking at your policies is really going back to say, "Can we develop a clear and objective path with this kind of language?" Because, you know, you look at it and you go, "Well, what is visual impairment or what is livability?" I mean, a lot of things are sort of touchy-feely, they aren't really quantifiable. And so you need to be able to literally distill things down to where you can paint a number to it, where somebody coming in can say, "Oh, I meet this, I meet this, I meet this," because there's a number, a measure, that I can meet in doing that. And so that's sort of it on that side. I think the TSP was touched on. A lot of the work in the TSP would have to be redone and remodeled based upon new land use assumptions. I think, as the staff has pointed out... I think, as the staff has pointed out, this has all been fairly well-integrated from the get-go. And so consequently, to now sort of change your potential land uses would mean going back and remodeling to make sure that the system that you're looking at, the impacts that you're seeing on your road network, actually fit what you're planning for. So you don't end up, say, building capacity where now you won't need it because that development won't happen there, or not having capacity on facilities where now development is going to happen that it wasn't planned for. And so, and I think, I'll stop after this one last, last point, and that gets back to your current status with your acknowledged comprehensive plan, and that one of the things you were required to do is nodal development. And so you have a performance measure, and that's your ability to reduce automobile trips by certain percentages of certain target dates out into the future. And we, you've been in negotiation or discussion with the commission for some time, how you're doing and meeting that, or not doing, or how you're not meeting that, and whether or not those are the correct measures, or whether you're going to need to develop some new measures. So regardless of what you do, you're going to have to come up with some tool, some set of performance measures that you could, that you could adopt, that will be part of your comprehensive plan and part of your transportation system plan, that will say, here's how we're going to reduce automobile trips and reduce greenhouse gas, reduce the need for single-occupancy vehicles. And so it's a heavy lift, any way you look at it. And motions such as this will really put a lot of things in play. Some, you could see some unintended consequences as it relates to existing plans that are currently, you're currently working with in the city. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We're going to open up the questions and on all of you've heard. And I have Alan in the queue.
Yeah, that was, thank you for the presentation, both of, all of the staff and Mr. Moore. Pretty amazingly profound impacts and changes, some of which are actually pretty bad. It sounds like it's almost a reset on Envision Eugene in a lot of ways. Unfortunately, this issue's been characterized as if, if you're, only the people that are in favor of the motion are those that are interested in protecting our neighborhoods and our livability. And I can assure you that's very far from the truth. I can't imagine anybody in this council's not interested in protecting neighborhoods and livability, especially R1 neighborhoods. And I, for one, have spent almost my entire term on the council protecting neighborhoods and our livability. For instance, in Ward III, we had a battle with the U of O over the development of the basketball arena, which I helped lead the charge, and we won that after we sued them and spent $15,000 from our neighborhood. In addition, there was the walnut node battle with city staff to protect our neighborhoods, and we won that one too, and I helped lead the fight. And then there was the, in our neighborhood, upzoning of a single-family neighborhood in the middle of the block to row houses, and we fought that and won that. And then there was Joe Romania lots in my neighborhood where, where there was a, our commercial property abutted against R1, and we managed to change the way that that was done. I think it was kind of a mixed bag, but I think we won that one too. And then South University neighborhood on 19th, where R4 and R1 smacked up against each other, really impacting R1 neighborhoods. And we managed to work through that and change it significantly, that kind of mixed bag, but I think it was a pretty good outcome. So we won all those, and we protected our neighborhoods. And the same's true here. I'm fully in favor of protecting neighborhoods and R1 neighborhoods. In the last meeting, I actually proposed some very straightforward, simple fixes to the plan that would have probably resolved a lot of these issues without having these profound impacts. So the reason I objected to that was, one, process and not of actual substance. Actually, we didn't get to discuss the substance that much. And the sweeping changes were granted, where we granted new property rights to owners in less than an hour, without really any discussion about the policy implications that are rather profound, I think. And I think that type of policy process, making a policy, is really inappropriate. But in contrast, the last two big policy changes that I proposed, paid sick leave and climate recovery ordinance, we had months and months and months of discussion about those before we even made any decisions about that. And I know that sometimes it's difficult to have these conversations and understand the full ramifications. I just had a couple of minutes to jot down a page and a half of questions, and I'd like to be in the next round, too.
Claire? So I appreciate Councilor Zelenka's comments. I agree. I think every councillor on this council want to protect established neighborhoods, and there was definitely unanimity that we needed to take some time to consider the specific concerns raised by residents in the South Willamette Special Area Zone proposal. And I have no doubt we could have worked through those and addressed them in a deliberate and thoughtful manner. And what we did instead was pass a motion that, on its face, appears to have thrown over a whole host of prior decisions and planning efforts. And I don't think that is a wise approach to our state-mandated land use process, especially since we, as a council, have the capacity to make smart and deliberate decisions that really hone in on the particular issues that folks were having with what was being proposed in that draft plan. So I do have a couple of questions, and I know you still have more research and analysis to do on the motion that this council passed. So I'm trying to limit it to things that you, either you can get back to us with answers. But did the draft South Willamette plan meet the requirements of the clear and objective standards that was mentioned? Analysis?
Yeah, absolutely. It did. That's, by definition, everything in the, in the code that's, that's a requirement, has to be clear and objective if it applies to a project that contains housing. So that's the simple answer. But there, there was an alternative path, was optional, for design review.
Okay.
But the code itself is clear and objective.
And do the deliberations of the planning commission, which forwarded this to us with the unanimous support, require them to consider the livability of current neighborhoods, including the specific considerations that were called out in the motion that council adopted? Specifically, the visual privacy and negative impacts of solar access?
Yeah, absolutely. Those were all a part of the conversation from the very beginning, based on policy direction from council, and also just the conversation from the community from the outset. So, yeah.
And currently, do property owners who have development proposed on adjacent properties have a process by which they can object to those proposed developments? And would those processes still have been in place in the special area zone?
The first question is, do adjacent property owners have a process by which they can object?
Or weigh-in, or?
Yeah, a weigh-in. It depends on the land use process, but those processes that are in place in the code currently would still be in place in the code with a special area zone. So that would not change.
And if we've made adjustments to the proposed zone that were more narrowly focused, such as what I think Councilor Zelenka and I were expecting to do, would that put us potentially in conflict with our metro plan or our state requirements? If we'd honed in on the specific places that we really heard a lot of concern?
No, I don't think it would. Again, I'm sort of responding without a great deal of analysis here, just sort of off the cuff, but I think the more broad-reaching concerns have to do with the citywide implications of the motion. On a case-by-case basis, which was sort of the intent for area planning from the beginning, if you make a modification here in one quarter, part of it, or even substantially, on a case-by-case basis, that really won't affect the capacity in any meaningful way in the big picture that, that would affect the overall Envision Eugene project.
Great. Those were my questions for now. I look forward to hearing more from you all about the broader implications for Envision Eugene and the transportation plan, and even the LTD's moving ahead efforts.
Hey, Chris?
Thank you. I remember back when I first got on the council 10 years ago, we had a list of 22 growth management policies that we used to hang on the wall. And I remember when I first came on, I looked at those, and I, and of the 22, I saw a lot of them that talked about a city policy around increased density as a way to avoid sprawl up and sit about. And as I looked at all 22 of them, I thought, you know, some of these don't agree with other ones. There's ones about preserving neighborhoods and maintaining livability, and there's other ones about density. And just the way they read, I see a collision coming, particularly a collision around the notion of what I, very early on, defined as a whack-a-mole issue, because it's exactly what it was. You whack down the density issue, and it pops up under sprawl. You whack it down under sprawl, and it comes up under density. And I just think, I just been waiting for this collision to occur. Because philosophically, I think people said, yeah, density's a way to avoid sprawl's a great idea. And then this is one of the first instances, though, where it's actually affecting people's homes. And so you say, well, I support that idea, and then you go, but wait a minute. You're actually proposing something, and it's actually affecting my home, and I don't like it anymore. And so this is, this was something to be expected. And I'm not saying that it was a bad planning process to get there, it was just we needed to be realistic about the fact that people support theories, but when you put the theories into practice, a lot of times, people don't like them anymore. And our planning processes need to anticipate the fact that things are great in theory, but you need to be able to make people very clear what it's going to look like when it's actually in reality, so you see if that test still works. I'm troubled by the fact that the city of Eugene is now seen as the enemy of neighborhoods. I don't know how we got there. I'm sorry we got there. I think it's unfortunate we've gotten there. I think some people have helped to contribute the feeling that we've gotten there. But I don't want to be the enemy of neighborhoods. I don't want to destroy livability, and I don't want to destroy the character of neighborhoods. I live in a single-family home. I think everybody in this table sits in a single-family home. There is no payoff for us to destroy neighborhoods. At the same time, we are wanting to achieve some sort of acknowledgement that 40,000 or 50,000 people are coming. They're coming. What are we going to do to accommodate them? Now, I don't want to destroy neighborhoods to figure out a way to do that, but I don't necessarily want to just expand the boundaries of the city to accommodate that. So we are put in that unfortunate position of having to decide what to do with those 40,000 people. I don't want to destroy neighborhoods to do it. I don't want a sprawl to do it. We've been trying to come up with a planning process to do it, and once the rubber meets the road, people are going, oh, wait a minute, I don't, I don't like the actual implementation of that. So I'm stuck. I'm in a quandary to figure out where we go from here. That was a philosophical conversation, but I think that's kind of what we're talking about right now.
Debbie?
Thank you. First, a question. You mentioned the Technical Resource Group. Are those people experts?
You want to answer that?
Sure. They're, they're a group of local, knowledgeable folks in different fields, and I could tell you who was on it, if that would be helpful.
I've seen it before, but I don't think, this is not staff, and it's not people who are really experts in planning, are they?
We have folks who have experience in real estate development, Home Builders Association, Thousand Friends, Planning Commission, Sustainability Commission, so advisory bodies to the city have representatives on it.
If I may, I'd also like to point out that, at this point, they could certainly be considered experts because they've gone through the same learning process as staff has over the past five years about a lot of the technical aspects that underlie Envision Eugene, many of which were actually brought up by members of the Technical Resource Group and asked us to pursue in great detail to find out what the answer was. So they came along with us. They probably know more than, more than most, for sure.
Another question, and I have a comment. You mentioned row houses as transition between commercial place and single-family. Would there have to be a, an empty space there? Would you get space for those row houses?
If, if the property's already, already occupied with a single-family home, that that transition would occur over time through some kind of redevelopment.
Means for someone buying the single-family home and doing something else?
Yes.
Which brings me to a comment. This, this doesn't seem to be an area where there's a lot of room for new development. It's, it's an area where it's all developed, pretty much. There are houses there already. And it is already a 20-minute neighborhood, which we say we're, we want. And it's, there may be some spots there, but when you do the broad thing, most of it is homes that people like, people, homes that are not just for rich people, homes that are within the budget of working, some, a lot of working people. And I think it, it would, did we ever think of doing, looking for spots? Well, I could think of a place like that on, not in that area, but at 30th and Hilliard. There's a large church that occupies almost a block between a grocery store and a medical clinic. That's for sale. And a place like that seems like an obvious place where you might want to put in multiple-unit buildings. And I know we talked in the past a lot about opportunity zoning, and I, I don't know that we ever decided that we were going to do huge areas all at once. But mainly, I think we should wait and ask the people who, let the, the neighbors who have gotten very involved, where they think we could have more density in this area. And take time to let them come up, let them, working with the planners, come up with That's all. Thank you.
Greg?
So, and I don't know if you've considered this in, in some of your deliberations, what's the long-term impact on property values of existing single-family homes if we implement the policy before what we did the other day with the, with the motion? What would be with the current planning that you have right now? Have you had any analysis around that?
So if you're asking about property, the impacts on property values based on what the previous recommendation was for the special area zone?
Yes.
There's been a lot of conversation about affordability, I'm going to say, effect on property values. And you hear, you hear basically both sides, depending on who you're talking to and what the context is. So some folks say, well, as the, as the area becomes more attractive over time, and presumably the improvements and the, the design requirements and that sort of thing over time would create a desirable district, then property values theoretically would go up on a square foot basis throughout the district. That's probably going to happen anyway, because it's close in the town and it has a lot of amenities already. Other folks say, well, if there happens to be a development that comes in next door that, that impacts your livability in some aspect, that that might have a negative impact on your property value. And so depending on your perspective and your, the scale of your thinking, people have said both things. In terms of an actual analysis, there, there isn't any real estate analysis or sort of expert analysis on property values, partly because there really isn't any citywide either, other than speculation.
So, for instance, going back to some things in terms of my growth and development in the Midwest, one of the things that I noted was that there were certain things, there were certain residential construction, multi-unit construction that went on that ultimately led to some solid single-family housing being demolished, removed, and then replaced by multi-unit housing that wasn't that good. And so one of the concerns that I have, and one of the reasons why I supported this, is because I'm really skeptical about what will happen to our property values in this area, and what could potentially happen if we're not careful in terms of the kind of quality and livability that we build into this plan for whatever densities that we're trying to create along these corridors, that it could have the reverse effect.
Yeah.
That, you know, we That, you know, we could have, you know, predatory development come in and take out, you know, some very solid housing that is already there. These are homes that potentially are going to turn over again and again, when you get people who eventually pass away, and they sell their homes, and they move on, do whatever. And these become, those bungalows are starter homes for people. And in some cases, not just starter homes, long-term homes for people. I grew up in one of those houses.
Yeah, just point out that absolutely, those concerns are out there, they have been since the very beginning, and that's one of the reasons why the special area zone puts into place, I would say, the most, the highest standards of anywhere in the city in terms of design, quality of materials, quality of construction, protections for adjacency and that sort of thing, because that was a significant concern in the beginning and a big part of the process. Another thing I'll mention in terms of property values is just the pace of change likely to be seen out there. We touched on this just a little bit last time. So, I think there's some ideas out there that if you, if you change the zoning, then the, the district changes dramatically overnight, and that, that simply isn't the case. The entitlements and the ability to do the kind of change that you were just mentioning a moment ago is already there in a lot of the district. So, it could happen next year, it could happen five years from now, but if it, if the special area zone wasn't in place, it could happen very differently and perhaps not as in keeping with, with the vision with some of the protections you mentioned.
I had a, I had a small thing. Another thing I think the plan did fairly well was try to balance the needs that we have for both single-family housing and multifamily housing, and provide options for folks to have places to live that aren't well represented around the city. So, it certainly wasn't an attempt to replace one kind of housing with another, but to add to the mix and, and offer options within an area close to a quarter.
Alan?
Yeah, one of the sections of the motion that was particularly important is the Section 2A, that basically is the one that you've been talking about, that Mr. Moore has been talking about, and it apparently has some very profound impacts on things that we've done and, and potentially would do within Envision Eugene and also within our existing plan context and, and differences between the metro plan and zoning where that occurs. And I'm curious about both of your interpretations of that section and, and why you came to the conclusion that you did. It seems to, well, why don't you tell me what your interpretation of it? It has a pretty big, from what you've said so far, has a pretty big impact on, on what we're doing. So, maybe you can clarify what you think that does.
Let me, paragraph two of the motion?
2A, yeah.
Oh, 2A. In reading this, what I took away from it was that, in consideration of the South Willamette Area Plan, when it came back, that there would also be a set of changes to the zoning that would apply citywide, that would in effect put in play the various requirements that were included within it with regard to protections for single-family zones throughout the city. That was my basic takeaway from it.
Yeah, that's, that's similar to what my takeaway was. It looks like there's essentially two, two tests. If you, if there's an adjacent single-family property with a home on it, the property next door can't be rezoned, that's how that looks. If the, it's unclear whether or not the limitation on whether the property owner agrees, if that applies to the property owner next door, if they agree that the next-door property should be allowed to rezone, then it can be, or if it just applies to the person who owns the, the, let's say, the commercial property next to the R1. So, that's a little bit ambiguous to me, but the first part seems pretty clear.
Right, yeah. Similar interpretation in that had that two-part test. So, if you have a property and there's no buildings around, no, any single-family or duplexes, then you could rezone it, and you'd have to have the adjacent property owner, every adjacent property owner's permission to rezone. In essence, someone could create a veto power over your neighbor's right to rezone or upzone or downzone, anything. That's kind of what I, and that's where you guys get to the impacts that you showed on some of these graphs, and Mr. Moore was talking about, that would cause basically us to reset on, on Envision Eugene because of that.
Yeah, I mean, you basically do have the two-part test, and so, first you have to ask yourself, you know, what is adjacent? So, I mean, imagine a piece of property that would have, on all four sides, vacant property? Yeah, chances are that's going to not happen a whole lot, there's going to be somebody living next door, and so, you'll have that to, to deal with, and then you also have to get the property owner's approval.
Right. I looked, I don't think, there, there aren't any R1 that has no building next to it.
Right.
It's probably very infrequent. The other couple of questions I had relate to the other new property rights that this grants that we created essentially, which relate to visual privacy, but that only goes to people, only grants to R1 folks, sorry, the way I interpret this, and that there's a, a new visual sightline protection, and, and then impacts from vehicle use. So, there's three new property rights that, am I interpreting that wrong? Do those exist anywhere else in, in our code? Or in land use?
Well, we would, we would, we had addressed these issues through the drafting of the South Willamette Special Area Zone, I believe, and they would, they've been turned into standards for some of the zones and transition areas to be applied in this area. They couldn't be lifted from the motion and placed into the code, because they're not written in a way that would be quite objective. I'm looking at Glenn, because he could confirm that. But we certainly do have standards that address these issues in our code, it's not impossible to do that.
Visual privacy standards?
Um, it, not so much, I don't know that the word privacy is addressed, but in terms of compatibility standards that were adopted for the Jefferson West Side Special Area Zone, for example.
Screening.
Screening, location of balconies that we showed, setbacks, step backs, slope setbacks, those, those kinds of things address that issue.
Yeah, and then the last one is that visual, or the vehicle impacts. The way this is written, I'm not sure how to interpret it or what it really means in terms of significant negative impacts arising from vehicle use. Does that mean on the street, in the neighborhood, in the area? And what does significant mean? And does that mean everybody then who proposes any change has to do a transportation study?
We don't know.
I neither.
What's the current zoning on 23rd between Willamette and Amazon Parkway?
R1 and R2. It's at the top of the map there.
Some of it is R2 now?
There is, close to Willamette, there are a couple of R2 properties, yes.
So, so what you've, what you've proposed is to make it all R2, is that correct?
The proposal there is apartment condo with a three-story height limit.
For the entire street?
For that section of 23rd, yes. It's designated for medium density.
That would be, but currently, part of it's R, most of it's R1, right?
Right, but in terms of the metro plan, there is one of those planned zone conflicts that Mr. Moore was talking about.
That's a part where I just, it's so obviously a single-family area, it seems that.
Yeah, just, just to explain a little bit what that means, so it's a, it's a pretty common area where there's some misunderstanding. So, the, the metro plan sets forth a designation for long-term, how the city would meet the state's requirements for how to accommodate jobs and housing. Now, as Mr. Moore was pointing out, some areas that are, for example, plan-designated for multifamily, like we're saying, long-term, this is going to be multifamily, the state says, okay, fine. Now, you can go ahead and leave the single-family zoning on top of it for now, but as, as time goes by, the idea is that property owners, if and when they want to, could rezone to a multifamily zone like R2, and then do something different with the property. And so, that's what we have to assume would happen on all the multifamily properties in town with our, with our land use plan.
Unless we do something to protect them, right? How about the area south of 30th? How, how did that get added? When did that get added to this plan?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question, I'm glad you asked. Early on in the process, there weren't any boundaries, so, you know, we didn't come in with a dotted line and say, let's look at this area. It, we basically said, okay, well, here's the South Willamette area, there's a corridor that's kind of loosely defined, and we're looking to the community to help define what that meant. And so, during a course of several conversations, public meetings, it was clear that, well, let's pull it in here, pull it in here, here's some appropriate locations. Initially, south of 29th wasn't on the plan. It was only through public input at a workshop, it might have been in 2011.
Who's, who's input?
Input from, I would say, a number of folks out in the community who basically said to us, well, it doesn't make any sense, staff, to just stop at 29th, because this corridor appears to us to go down here to this intersection of Donald, and there's some property down there, that that makes sort of a logical end to this district. And so, in response to that, we said, well, okay, does it make sense to extend this down here? What we heard was, yeah, it does. And of course, people have various opinions, you know, not, not everybody, it's not 100% of people saying the same thing, it never is.
The people who live there were not the people who wanted you to extend that, I think.
Well, you know, we're, we're not checking people's addresses to see whether they live there or not, based, based on their input. But it did come from the public input.
And another question, what about, can Cascade Manor continue to build more tall buildings under the current plan or under the proposed plan?
Well, the way it's written currently, the, the proposed special area zone would actually allow more height in that area, as I went over before, so that one area right around Portland Street would allow more height.
That's one of the areas where there's a great deal of concern about this proposal.
Yes.
I guess you know that.
Is your question, what would be allowed if the plan doesn't go through on the Portland Street area? There is a mix, you can see it on the map here, of R1 and R2 zoning between 30th and 29th on Portland, and some of that is owned by Cascade Manor, some of it is not. If they were to propose a similar building to the one they are finishing right now, they, I would anticipate they would apply for a zone change from R1 to R2, and then they would be allowed, if that went through, to build to 35 feet.
And that's something we should probably guard against, which the motion we passed would help with, maybe.
No, it wouldn't.
Wouldn't help?
It, it wouldn't address that issue, because that would not be part of the plan anymore.
So, they could apply for R2, and who would, who would have to approve that?
The hearings official approves zone changes.
The council couldn't do anything about it, right?
Well, I, I think under the current motion, they could not do a zone change.
Okay.
So, if they're currently zoned R1, they couldn't change.
Then that might be a good, good outcome of the current motion, of the motion we passed.
Yeah, it could be an outcome, yeah.
I said good. Okay. I, I have a motion which some of you have seen, which does not change the motion that we made and does not open it at all. I move to, reading glasses. I move to change January 19th to May 23rd as a date for the public hearing on the South Willamette Special Area Zone.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, now that we're moving away from, I have Chris and Mike in this, in the former queue, and now we're in a queue on Betty's motion. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'll save the other comments for another time here, but I will say that I, I understand now, and understood previously, Betty's concern around the timing of the, the motion that we passed last week. And I certainly want to make sure that all of the impacts, as we've heard tonight, staff certainly had a couple of days, they don't know really what all of the impacts are at this time of our decision to change direction a little. And I don't know that the neighbors have then that ability either, nor to work with staff thoroughly, which is why this doesn't come back for several months. But still, it may be kind of a tight timeline, and John said as well, we can't do it by January 19th. And so, I want to be reasonable and understand that, but I also don't want to hold up our work within Envision Eugene by having this drag out forever. So, I would be willing to meet halfway and say, I move to amend, to move the hearing to March 14th.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, we're on the amended motion. Claire and then George Brown.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this motion or any other motion to change the date, because we ignored the city manager and city attorney's advice when we passed this original motion, and maybe I'm just feeling particularly petulant this evening, but I don't think we should be telling the city manager and the city attorney when to be holding these hearings on motions that have created so much uncertainty about how we're going to go forward with these things. We're not giving our staff the time or the respect that they need to do their work properly, so I'm voting no on this motion.
George Brown?
I have a question for the city attorney. By making this motion merely to change the date of a public hearing, that in no way is interpreted as revisiting the motion or opening it up for reconsidering the motion that we made on Wednesday.
The only thing this motion would do is change the date from January 19th to, depending on the outcome of your motion to amend, Mike's motion to amend, March 14th or May 23rd. No other part of the motion made last week would be affected by this motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so, it looks to me like we're ready to vote on the amendment to Betty's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition, one, two, three, it passes. Now, we'll go back to the main motion.
I was going to go May.
Go back to the main motion as amended. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and in opposition, one, it passes. Okay, so that's taken care of, and that leaves us at May, right?
March.
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 Yep, okay, March. All right, and then we're now back to the discussion we were having before. Chris?
Thank you. Actually, I could see how there might be a different interpretation of 2A. The one interpretation is that you have the ability to control how zoning would occur in adjacent areas. Another interpretation was this was intended, maybe not clearly, but this was intended to say, no, it really only affects how I can, the zoning for my property. It might, although, have an unintended consequence of actually having that, even that, even though that was not the intent. But my question, let's go back to the other intent, which is, it's really intended to affect your ability to rezone my property. If I'm R1, you can't change the zoning of my property without my permission. Let's say there was a circumstance where you wanted to build transportation infrastructure, you needed a right-of-way, and that right-of-way would go through an R1 piece of property. And so, you said, I need that R1 piece of property in order to complete the transportation corridor and off-ramp, whatever it is. And the owner of that property says, no. Does the city have any recourse over that? Is there still the ability to exercise eminent domain or, or other, in other words, is this something that's binding on the council, or would there still be a legal possibility?
So, a couple responses, which will also address something that was said earlier that I think people may be confused about. that I think people may be confused about. The motion that the council passed last week has no legal effect. None. It's direction to the city manager and staff about all of the things that you heard Robin and Terry talk about in terms of what the special area zone needs to, how it needs to be changed to come back to the council for approval, rejection, revision, whatever. It's direction to staff as to what to do with Envision Eugene and all of the other planning efforts that Terry had up on the screen, transportation, moving forward, all those things. So the motion would not preclude the city from doing anything. In terms of the specific question that you asked, Chris, about suppose that there is a right-of-way that the city needs that would go through something currently zoned R1, I need some help here, but I thought the rule is the zoning doesn't control streets. In other words, we can have a street on R1-zoned property. Does that sound right?
Uh huh.
Streets are not zoned. So I think the answer, and we'll double-check to let you know for sure, but I think the answer is, if what we want to do is put in a street, even though property is zoned R1, we could still do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't have, you know, a consequence. I mean, I'm fine with people wanting to have some sense of control over their property, that's okay, but I don't want for needs that the community might have to suddenly be stalled or unable to happen in particular, because under number three, it says, "With respect to transit corridors that have been previously identified by staff," and transit corridors would be a logical place where you would be doing those kinds of improvements, which leads to my next question. How many previously identified by staff transit corridors are there? Do you know off the top of your head how many there are?
I've got a map right here. I think--
Is it just those?
It's the white dotted lines. Sorry, they're a little hard to see, but they are Highway 99, River Road, Coburg, Franklin, 6th, 7th, and 11th, and South Willamette.
Okay, so seven, approximately seven transportation corridors, seven or eight. Okay, okay. That's really helpful to know. I'm really trying to get a sense of what are the, both the short and the far-reaching implications of what this might do if it carries all the way through to the final plan. I realize at this point, it's a direction to staff, but it could ultimately lead to something that's incorporated into a final plan. So I just want to be very clear on just what the implications are and how far it goes. So, thank you, I appreciate the information.
I know that you haven't, you're not to this place yet, but the clearer we can be, and I don't know how long it will take you to know that, but the clearer we can be about not only what plans are affected and how much it would take to go back through them, but what does that collide with in terms of the obligations we have, in terms of our urban growth work and all of that? So what I don't know is what's the consequences if it takes too long, or we somehow are bumping up against the agreements that we have? What are the consequences of that for us and what will happen? So that's what I'm interested in understanding as soon as we can possibly understand it, because only then will we know what the hurdle is that we have to get over if we continue in this direction.
And the anticipation is, as we do further analysis and start trying to figure out, okay, so what's the work plan for Envision Eugene now? What's the work plan for the transportation system plan for all of those different things? And we start outlining, in light of the motion and the new direction, what do we think we need to do? We might start identifying some of those potential conflicts out there, and as we do, we will inform the council.
So the, I do have Mike and Alan and Greg in the queue, but--
And Betty.
And Betty. So the other question for me around that one is, is there a place where this, that because of the kind of agreements we have with the state, where they will say that you can't go in this direction because that's not going to be, doesn't work with the plans that we, the way it's set up, that you're supposed to work with the state on these issues?
I would hope that the state will wait until we have identified what the possibilities are in light of the motion, and then have that conversation with the state.
Okay.
We have received this direction from council. Our intent is to do everything we can to comply with it. If we get to a point, as Mr. Moore was talking about, where at least preliminarily, it's possible that we can't fully implement this motion, in addition to having a conversation with the state, we would then come back to the council and say, "We've tried, here are the problems. You've said, 'Do this, do this,' the state says, 'Do that,' and there's no way to make all those things work together." But we haven't had enough time to tell you, we think that's where we are yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I've got Mike, Alan, Greg, and Betty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Although I have to say, I think Glenn did an excellent job of summarizing a lot of the things I was going to say, which is, I'll restate them differently with another piece that I think's important. What this council did was give direction to the staff, that we appreciate all the hard work you've done, and with everyone else, and it's important work, and there are many pieces of it we would like to see go forward. What we also said was, "Thank you for showing us what some of those impacts look like, and our job is to listen to the community and respond to that." So we did. Now, what we've done is simply give staff direction. As Glenn said very, very well, what we haven't done is make a legally binding decision. That comes later. And I would like to encourage everybody to continue on the path that the mayor has said so many times at this table, as has the manager, and put into place with everything that he does, to encourage us to avoid our worst fears, and to look towards our best outcomes, understanding the direction, and to be a set of can-do people who say, "Okay, we get what the strong, you know, direction from council is, we get where your sentiments are here, and we're going to try and lead this process in that direction." And I would encourage you to do that, not to throw up roadblocks of what frightens us, but to simply acknowledge, "Well, there may be some tricky parts. We're going to, when we finally come back with the ordinance, we're going to have to tweak a little bit in order to get it right." Okay, good, let's do that. But from this point, we've given a clear direction, and it takes into account all the pieces, which is what this council is supposed to do. And I think we said pretty clearly, we want to protect property owners' rights. I'll get into later, at a more appropriate time, some of the comments that were made, but that I think aren't a part of what we were actually doing the other day. But I appreciate everybody's work, and I think there's a way for us to move forward here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alan, you're next.
Yeah, Counselor Pryor is interested in your alternative interpretation, which I tried to get to with that Section 2A, except for that phrase that says, "You can't change the rezone of a property or an immediately adjacent property." And I don't know what that adjacency clause adds if it doesn't mean apply to the property next door. That's what adjacent means to me, so I guess that's an open question. Question for the city attorney, and thereby creating a veto right over what's happening next door. Question, it obviously doesn't create any legal significance right now, because it's not a law, but eventually, doesn't all of this become an ordinance, and then it will become a, have legal force behind it? Right now, it's just direction.
Once it becomes an ordinance, it will have legal force behind it. What you won't see in an ordinance is something that would make contingent on an adjacent property owner's approval a rezoning. That would be, in my opinion, unlawful. But we don't have to do that. I mean, the way I read the motion, and I think the way we would deal with this, is to give the council the information about this piece of property, the adjacent property owner objects, doesn't want the thing to be rezoned. You, as the council, get to make a legislative decision for this entire package, and so that's just one more piece of information that you will have. You can decide, after listening to all the testimony, including what that adjacent property owner said, we're going to follow the direction in this motion, or you're going to decide, you know, "We're not going to let that property owner veto because there are other competing interests," and so you can decide, "Yep, that was the direction, and that's how staff's going to bring it back to you, so you get what you asked for," but you can then decide you're not going to let the property owner, in a sense, veto. So this is telling staff how to bring something back to you. It in no way requires you to approve it. So it's information that you'll have. But in terms of future rezonings, right now, the code contains language, a process for how rezoning works, and there's certain standards that have to be met. We will not be presenting you a revision to that that says, and in addition to those, I don't know how many there are, four, five, eight standards, there's an additional one that says, "Adjacent property owners have signed off." So you won't see that in ordinance language, but you will be given the information for any proposed rezonings as part of this package, whether it's the way it is, because adjacent property owners have objected.
So clearly, an objection to an adjacent property owner's rezoning would be illegal? Is that what you said?
Having something in the code, the council cannot delegate to an adjacent property owner the decision as to whether to legally rezone property. You can delegate that to a hearings official, the planning commission, the planning director. You can't delegate it to a private party.
Uh huh. So we could actually do it?
Do what?
Have, delegate that to the planning director, for instance, say, and give him direction, or the city manager, and say, "Anybody objects, don't do it."
No, because at that point, you are delegating the power to the adjacent property owner to say, "No."
What about the second part of the test that says, "And none of the adjacent properties have an existing single-family home or duplex on it." So that means only areas that are surrounded by vacant land could be rezoned.
I haven't studied the motion closely enough to be able to answer that question. I expect that as we are working through both with South Willamette and with all of the other planning efforts that Terry put up on the screen, that there will be questions that we have as we're trying to work through this, and if there are, we'll come back to the council and say, "We see two different interpretations, or five different interpretations. Which one did you mean?"
Right.
I just haven't studied it well enough to answer your question now.
Because I would suspect that there'd be very, very few properties where all the adjacent properties were vacant, and that would render, that would mean nothing could get changed out of R1. Yeah, again, this isn't really about protecting neighborhoods. I think every one of us wants to protect neighborhoods. In fact, I came up with ideas about how to change the plan to protect neighborhoods. I think this goes way beyond just the South Willamette plan in terms of its implications for all of the different things that we're doing in Envision Eugene, and our transportation plan, and climate recovery ordinance, and the Bethel Plan, and I guess the question I had was similar to the mayor's, is how long is it going to take you to figure that out?
Don't know yet, because I think there's, it just depends on the vast scope, or the scope on which these would impact those other plans, so I don't know the answer to that yet.
Greg?
So, following up on your latest advice here, Glenn, the motion that we passed on Wednesday would not preclude us, say, Counselor Evans, for example, or, you know, Counselor Pryor, or any other counselor here, from putting forth another motion that could clarify intent of what was passed on Wednesday. So if there was another motion put before council to clarify direction and to clean up some problematic areas of this particular motion, that is allowable for us to do, correct?
Correct. The council can pass a motion at any time to change the direction or to clarify the direction that the council previously gave.
So if one of us is working on that, or whatever the case may be, because I know that we can't technically or otherwise legally work outside the bounds of this table, but if, say, one of us came up with another, a better way to go, that would not preclude us from moving in that direction?
Correct. If a counselor or a less-than-majority of the council came up with a way to clarify the motion, then you would use your existing process to send out as an intended motion. Somebody wants to make this interpretation, this clarification, and then the council could take it up at some meeting after you send out that intended motion.
Right. And so we could create a better mousetrap. Another mousetrap, another mousetrap, but I want a better mousetrap.
I just want to emphasize that for the public, because you had a phrase in there that said, "It's not legal for counselors to talk with each other about an issue outside of this table." As Glenn said, it's not legal for you to have a majority of them doing that, but--
But, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
You know, we could talk one-on-one or whatever, yeah.
Correct.
Right, right, yeah. No, no, yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to keep it legal, so.
Betty?
I just had a, when Glenn said this has no legal standing, I wondered, why is everyone so worried about it, the opponents, then?
That's not a legal question either, but I can speculate for you.
Staff seems to be worried about it, and some other people.
The council direction is to change the work and the task list in a number of different planning efforts. And so there's a lot that has been done that we will now need to go back and figure out which parts of it need to be redone, changed, modified. Robin talked to you about what those implications are for South Willamette. We're just beginning to try to figure out what the implications are for Envision Eugene. So I think, and you heard Mr. Moore talk about how he has interpreted the motion, which may be completely accurate, like I say, I just haven't studied it enough, that would put some of this stuff on a collision course between trying to not increase densities and yet still live within, at least, the existing direction from the council, is don't expand the UGB for residential. It may be, it's not possible to do both of those things. And so the reason why I think people are concerned, it's not the legal standing of the motion, it's the direction that you've given staff to go redo, rethink, reexamine, talk to people again, talk to neighbors, talk to the public about things that have already been discussed, and a particular path taken, and this changes that path. It doesn't legally change the path, but it certainly changes the path for the public involvement and for the staff that are working on this.
Because, since this is very time-consuming, wouldn't it have been better if we had the public hearing at the time I suggested, then, March?
I don't know about that. I think the majority of the council prefers it in March. Just to build on a little bit about what Glenn's saying, I think some of the concern, part of it is the unknown. It does feel like it's a, potentially a significant policy change that could impact a variety of projects already underway, because the underpinnings of many things that we've been doing are the assumptions that have been made, and we've moved forward in Envision Eugene. And so I think that's the anxiety you hear from me and staff. One, we're not sure if that's true or not, but it potentially does impact the things that were talked about, or in Envision Eugene itself, with urban growth boundaries, whether it's transit corridors and the eventual use of transit along those transit corridors, it's about climate recovery ordinances. We don't know the answers to all those things, and I think that's part of the anxiety that you feel, which is why also I'm very hesitant on the January date to really talk about those kinds of impacts, if that's important for council to know.
Thank you.
I'm going to wrap it up with Chris. He has one more.
Yeah, and I didn't really want to talk anymore about what we did because whether it turns out to ultimately be to the benefit of the work or to the detriment of the work still needs to be determined. So that's something that we're going to work on. But I do want to talk a little bit about how we did it because I think it's very important for us as a deliberative body to remind ourselves that we have an obligation to do things in a way that is effective, constructive, thoughtful, and deliberate. And so I would plead with my colleagues to utilize a process where if we want to pass motions, whether they are binding or non-binding, or legal or not legal, or whatever they are, that we should talk about it before we pass it. I think it is not helpful to, whether it's 24 hours, or three days, or two weeks, if a motion is offered up and we've never talked about it, I think that is not a good process because what it leads to is us having to completely reschedule a meeting so we can talk about something that we've already passed. And to me, that seems completely backwards. I like to talk about things before I vote on them, not vote on them and then talk about it. That seems entirely unconstructive. And I realize there's a great desire to do something, but to me, to do something and simply then have to take it back or re-talk about it or modify it or whatever, to me, doesn't seem constructive. So I would just encourage that we adopt a system where before we throw something out and ask us all to vote on it without having talked about it, even if it is a good thing in the end, it's, like I said, it's not about the content, what we do. I really strictly want to focus on how we do things, and I think we really should try to do things in a way that is good public policy. If there's a great idea, I just want to talk about it first and not vote on it without having talked about it. And so to me, I think that, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, I would really encourage us to do that. And saying, well, I released it 24 hours beforehand, is not sufficient to me. It's not ready to vote on until we have talked about it. That's all, that's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking, is let's try to do that more and do less of putting things out there, asking for a vote right now before we've had a chance to talk about it.
Yes, I would only add to that, that it's important to me that in our, that we have time to talk about it where we actually ask the staff that have worked on it what they think the implications of what we're talking about doing are because they have worked on it for a long time, and the planning commission has put in untold hours on it as well. Thank you, and the next meeting, 7:30.